I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To close a regular meeting, open the meeting to a public hearing, noncompliant, removal of building, laundry, gas station, building. Meeting is open for the noncompliance, removal of building, laundry, gas station.
Can I say something, George?
Yep.
Tell you what I've done. Thanks. They came up and done all the digging. You got this report from Encon, right? Very last thing on. Okay? The Encon man is coming back. He wants to have, he'll be back 10:30 the morning of the 24th. I'll have a backhoe for him. He'd like to have your people there. He's looking for a dry well. It ain't there, but he's looking to... Oh, I mean, this ain't so funny to me. I've gotta pay every time this happens.
I understand that.
Mr. Mayor, just for an update, the last time we were here, we agreed that we're gonna try to do some kind of timetable to mediate this property, because first stage was doing this excavation around the building to determine viability of the foundation and any environmental problems, even though this tribunal wasn't prepared to exercise any jurisdiction or invoke DEC's jurisdiction on that. DEC was called. Basically, the place got a clean bill of health from DEC. After this was done, DEC became aware of this floor drain, and they're gonna come out and they're gonna take care of that. I understand from the village engineer that there is a report, but I don't have a copy of it. I appreciate getting a copy at some point of his report regarding what he feels needs to be done to the foundation. Apparently, he's got a couple of recommendations that need to be done to make the foundation viable. And once we get that report, we're gonna submit it to either contractor or someone to find out how much it's gonna cost and take the measures to fix that. So that's where we're at.
So you have nothing for tonight, other than, tonight you were supposed to have a plan of attack of where we were gonna go.
Oh, we're gonna have a plan of attack. We ain't gone with Encon yet. I don't have a copy of your engineers' report.
You don't?
That's what we were, we, we don't have a copy of this report. Says what you guys feel needs to be done to the foundation.
Well, I don't think the village of Rosas wants you to blame the engineers for private people. That, that report is for us.
Well, you're the one that's telling us that the place isn't suitable, so I think you're the one who has to tell us.
Don't you think, don't you think, sir, that you, that you should've had an architect or an engineer on site to design?
Apparently, what our architect says doesn't matter. What your village engineer says is what matters, and so I'm saying...
But our code enforcement officer said no.
Well, then give me a copy of what he says, Mr. Mayor. I don't mean to be curt, but I'm saying you're the one who's telling us what we gotta do, so I'd appreciate a copy of your report that says what we have to do. And then, and then we're taking this one step at a time. And cost is a factor here, and it seems like every time my clients turn their back, they're told they have to do something else. They paid a substantial amount of money a few weeks ago to have a backhoe out there, and the DEC was there, and everyone thought everything was fine, and they leave, and all of a sudden, they get a call from someone on behalf of the village that says, "Oh, you gotta come back. We gotta dig up again. There's a floor drain in there." This costs these people money every time they gotta get a backhoe out there. I appreciate the cost to the village, but we're not the ones that opened up this can of worms. We're prepared to follow up on it and do what the village says is necessary. Our architects said nothing had to be done. So if your engineers have something that has to be done, we need to know what that is. And we're not gonna go out and spend a lot of money getting an architect's print and everything until we know what, what you guys say needs to be done to this foundation.
Does anybody else want to address the board on this issue?
When you had the backhoe there a couple of weeks ago, what did you, what did you find out with the, with the foundation? Because last time you were here, you said that if there wasn't a suitable foundation, that it was, you were just gonna tear the building down.
I talked to the engineer, wherever he is here. He's found underneath, on the west side of it, there was some junk. We'd have to excavate there.
Weren't you there also?
Yes, I was there.
Wow, you say he's found, I guess, I mean, this is supposed to be a, this is not just the village. I mean, this is supposed to be a joint effort.
Well, anyway, I would agree to what he wanted done. He said we just undermine it a little bit, bring in a soil mix of a, by a truck, and pour it in there. And that would, going by itself, fulfill any void areas. I would do that.
And he also said that there was spots that there was no foundation.
There's no spot, there's not a foundation.
He needs a footing.
A footing.
There's a 40-inch wall all the way around the building, but the older part is sitting on a pad. The newer part is not, but there's still 40 inches of wall. He was there.
But...
Timmy Lindgren was there.
Well, Mr. Menard's point is, is that the area of the building that doesn't have a footing needs to have a footing put underneath.
Well, you could basically do the same thing with a load of concrete, right?
Concrete can be used to form up and make...
I mean, you have to undermine it with a hand shovel.
Yeah.
But that would, that would satisfy the engineering part, right?
Well, what you need to do is have your design professional engineer submit to the village your plan, how you're going to fix that foundation, and then it'll be reviewed and approved.
Well, basically, the plan would be put some concrete under, out of a bastion. Whatever's to, if you want 2,500-pound mix, I mean, you're gonna put 5,000-pound mix in there.
That's, that's where you would propose what you're going to do to us, and we would review it, instead of the village prescribing and designing for you to fix. We've identified the problems, and now you will submit your solution.
Then, and my solution is not what you want, then we go out one more time?
Then we talk about it, and then we agree?
But George wants to get the thing done sometime this year, and I don't blame him a bit. You know, Bob wants to get it done, but the people, I don't know, you know, what we're thinking, my sister was thinking of a guy across the lake or somebody she talked to in Champaign. So, you know, they look, but what? Before we even spend any money to get a couple loads of concrete, whatever it takes, what's the next zinger on top of it? I mean, at any point, if you're putting concrete under it, if there's something else, if you're putting concrete under it, we'll do it. I'll be glad to do it. But I can't move the foundation, you know? I'll be glad to have them undermine the wall and put that mix in there, but I, you know, can't really move the foundation. And if you wanted it to come up higher, you know, in the trench, or we'd form it, or whatever, because, you know, you could bring it up to ground level if you wanted to. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even be mad about that. And that would box the whole thing in with concrete. It'd cost me a couple loads of concrete, which I don't mind doing. If that will solve the problem.
But that's only one, that's only one of the problems that needs to be addressed. Now, you're still, that's, that's one problem, the foundation.
Right.
Now, now you're looking at that expense, and then, now you're, I mean...
Rust, rust...
To me, you're, you're gonna get into the expense of what we discussed in the last meeting that you were here, is that the expense is gonna be too much, and you're not gonna be willing to spend that. You know, I mean, where, where is it, where are you gonna say, once you start spending, spending this money? You know, at what point in time are you gonna say, "Well, this is too much money. I don't wanna spend anymore"?
We wouldn't even be sitting here. I asked Bob when this first started in April, and he says we can't use a footprint of that building to put another building in. If that building comes down, that's it, the body. No such thing. Because the footprint, it's too close to your shore in the back, it's too close to the state easement, and there's less than 15 foot in between it and the road. The total slope on the road without is what, 14 foot? Bobby, you walked it that day. So I can't even use a footprint. If I want a building there, I gotta do something, well, what's there? No way I can use a footprint.
If it's my understanding, you could also, I mean, if you tear the building down, uh, it's my understanding that the board, the board can also approve a land permit also, and we could...
Well, Bob's the guy that's gotta approve the permit. And he said no. I already asked him, and he said, "They didn't nail the things up." He said, "We're sorry, but we can't give you permission to build something from one side of the building down."
I don't, I guess, in my, in my opinion, yes, he, Bob, that does have, have a say in it, but also the board has a say in it also.
Well, I'm not familiar with how it was run, but, I mean, I gotta take Bob's word for it. I don't, you know, that's his job. He's doing it. I don't have any argument with Bob. I'll tell you, I don't have any argument.
So basically, all, all your argument is, is you would tear the building down if you could put another building up?
If my sister wanted to.
Right. So that's what, that's what we're arguing about right here, basically.
Well, the argument is, it's gonna be a lot more money, because you're gonna have to remove all that concrete, put it somewhere. You gotta break it up somehow, put it somewhere. You're gonna have to get in there and compact it to whoever, whatever specs. I don't know what kind of a permit we would need from anyone but the village of Rosas, whether we'd need a permit from, or whatever the permit, getting outfitted from, from Raybrook there. But I asked the guy up there about putting stone in the back of the building. He's gonna come and inspect that, see if we could put stone in. But I can't do anything there with the stone until he comes in and inspects. So I don't know what, you know, I don't know what would happen. I don't know how much more that's gonna jack the price up if we did something like that. Personally, I'd rather save the old one and just get it over with. That's not really bothering anybody, other than being an isoler.
Nope, but it's gonna, it's gonna run you into an extensive amount of money to fix that up. That it would be more money to fix it up than it would be to tear the building down and put a slot there and put a, and put a building on top of it.
My sister would, you know, my sister could dock herself. She wants to have that building there. And as far as I'm concerned, she's entitled to it, you know?
As long as you're willing to bring it back up to specs. And like we discussed at the last meeting, that's gonna cost a lot of money. And you yourself said that you weren't...
I ain't spending that kind of money on it.
Right, exactly.
I, I, my sister might, but I ain't.
That's what we have to discuss here.
I'm, I'm willing to, to, like I say, do whatever's gotta be done to the foundation. That's gotta be done first. And then, when the foundation is all right, then the rest of it is wood. We're gonna have a man come in, and for his price, he was gonna fix the outside of the building. The only changes on the building were gonna be the doors to the restrooms were gonna be taken off, and that was just gonna be boarded up. You'd enter the restroom from the inside. You're gonna change the electricity for it, put a chimney on it, put a roof on it, all the doors and windows. And that's what that now is gonna do.
For what price? That was for the $6,000?
That was probably for, for...
$5,000 to $6,000, that was what two different contractors were willing to do.
It is my recollection that, that quote had nothing to do with the structure itself. It had, it was cosmetics, I mean, it was the outside...
It's not cosmetics, no, because he's gotta tear the wall down on the north side to replace that sill.
I don't remember seeing anything in there about tearing any wall down.
Well, I mentioned that here at the meeting once before. That wall is, he's gotta put a sill.
Yes, it was, but that wasn't in, that wasn't in the original...
Well, I think it was.
No, it wasn't.
He had it down as replace siding.
Yeah, replace siding is not replacing wall.
No, no. We all, there's no doubt in my mind the sill's gotta be replaced. We've got no argument from me there.
Hi. I have a question, Tim. What is your permitted use gonna be for that building?
Well, what about?
What are you gonna use the building for?
Rudy says she wants to use it for an office.
It's not permitted in that area. It had to come under special use, though, now if you go into the office...
When did that all change?
That's the zoning. I mean, I, I'm not, I don't write them, believe me.
I don't know. I mean, you got a hotel in one corner, a motel I could hit with a stone, and a gas, a mobile gas station in service. That's not commercial ware no more?
Because you're no, because it's no longer in that use after one year. You can't. Then I have to go to permitted use chart.
Well, what I have to do, or what she have to go through to get...
She could, you could put a single family, a two-family, or an antique, antique shop there, which is permitted.
How about you want to put this right there, or something of that nature?
More than likely, it wouldn't be permitted.
I don't know what the hell part of your ownership property is here. Really, I don't.
Well, unfortunately, Tim, that when you make a piece of property go for 22 years and then zoning comes in, that's what happens. You know, it's not, you know, we're not calling the shots on this. That's just the way it is.
We're really, I mean, we don't have anything to do with the zoning either. I mean, we're, that's the way it was set up for us. It's not like we're, we're picking and choosing where...
Well, somebody come right out and tell me what the hell is your agenda here? I mean, what do you wanna do? You're gonna tear that place down, and you want the stone building tore down, and I rake it all away? And then I go away and say, "Hell with it. Rosas, Wayne, I are done"? I mean, what is your agenda? What do you want done? If Bob says I can't have something...
What do you do after that? Go after the house? Really, what is going on here?
You know?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't mind whatever we gotta do here. I ain't gonna, I don't wanna sound like a fool, but there must be an agenda you have. If I can't have the shell building, how the hell can I have that big stone building? You know? If I don't have something for the stone building, how the hell can I have it if I can't have the shell building? I mean, what's next here? What, somebody just flat, tell me what's cooking? I don't wanna fool around. I don't waste your time, and I, I don't need to have a stroke over either.
Tim? I don't know if I'll explain this to you right or not. Several years ago, the village took the stand that they were gonna put zoning in. Bob, what's the date of that? You got the date right on it?
1994, I believe.
1994. And they hired this individual, Dr. Lamb, I think it is. Came in and sat down, and they formed a zoning board. And all these rules and regulations were written and brought before the public, brought up to a public hearing, and passed. What Bob is going by is zoning. Now, it may appear that we're picking on you, and I hope that you don't think that, but... Tonight, right after we get done with this hearing, there's another hearing on the other end of the town. And about another month, there's gonna be a hearing on another piece of property down on Rosale. And what, what they're, what we're trying to do is to bring the village, to bring it back up to safety standards.
Well, geez, I'm pretty, that building is not unsafe. That little building. I mean, you got two, you got more cracks up at the high school, and the foundation up at the high school, or the kids' school. You got more cracks in that foundation than that old shell station was.
It's not, it's not...
Oh, no, I can't do anything about something else. I'm just bringing that up. Right on the head of your street, that house with the tower on, got cracks I could put my thumb in.
When you have vacant buildings sitting around, it's a liability for the property owner, as well as it is for the village.
Well, why is a vacant building any more dangerous than a building with people in it?
Because somebody can go in and they can get hurt. Somebody's not gonna go in, more than likely, unless they break in. Do you understand what I'm saying and hope? But in a vacant building that's sitting around, if the children go around, or somebody goes in and gets hurt, or they start a fire, it's, it's a fire and safety hazard also.
There are little children sleeping in a house four doors up from us, every night. And I don't see any problem with that. That is a worse fire hazard than I know personally, is a far worse hot fire hazard than anything that we own.
Well, if you come to me after and you'll give me information, I'll be more than glad to...
Bob?
Put it on the record and look into it.
If we, Bob, if we tear this building down, is there, can they put a building up?
They can apply, they can apply, they can apply for a variance, first of all, for the, for the area or use variance. If they wanna go in an office, it's a special use. And a special use has to go before the zoning board, the field, and anything that's under special use, whether, if it's within 500 feet of a state or county or local boundary, will have to go to the county planning board for approval also.
Maybe I can comment on it too, Tim. Under, under the zoning laws, special permitted use, that's, and again, I haven't, I'll rely on Bob to comment whether that's what's required to put an office on that property or not. But under the zoning laws, special permitted use is a use that's deemed approvable with conditions. So as Bob mentioned, that is something that would have to go in front of the zoning board. Technically, the zoning board could not deny it, but they could impose conditions upon it, things like hours of operation, or parking, or, or whatever...
We couldn't afford to build it under those conditions.
Well, I, I, I'm not saying what conditions would be imposed, Mr. Malloy. I don't know. I mean, a lot would depend on the application, the nature of the business, et cetera. So I guess to answer your question, it is certainly possible that an office could go in there if, if what Bob is saying is correct. And again, I haven't looked at the zoning law or the map to say exactly what can or can't be there, or special use permits require. So I'm leaning on him as to what he said about that. But certainly, it's possible that an office could be built there. It just, you know, it just depends on the layout and what it's going to be used for. But there's always issues with parking and...
I still have my answer on the other question I asked, because I'm gonna be facing the same problem that George was, with an empty building.
You know, and I don't mean to disbelieve Mr. Malloy, but I don't know if there are any issues with the...
That problem if you maintain that building. That's the problem, they're not being maintained. That building right now is deemed perfectly sound, except for the back wall that's caved in, the bottom wall. No one's made an attempt to fix that wall. It's still caving in.
What wall is that now?
On the, on the, on the stone building you're talking about.
Yeah, on the right-hand side. Bob said he was gonna write me up on it.
I didn't say I was gonna write to him. I brought it to your attention. I said that you should fix it.
And since then, I've tried to get a mason, which I haven't had any success with.
Well, what I'm saying, Tim, if you keep letting it go, it keeps falling down.
I'm not gonna let it go. But the thing is, I don't wanna put anyone in it if we're gonna go right from the fire to the frying pan, or the other way around. You know what I'm saying? I don't wanna spend a nickel if...
Okay, Bob, I've got another question. Okay, say they fix this, this building up that's standing right there. Now, they bring it all up to code, can they put an office in there?
Under special use, yes.
And it would have to be the same special use permit as it would be if they tore the building down and put another building up?
Regardless, yeah.
So either, either way, you're gonna have to get a special permit for, for an office. For an office.
There's a whole list of things here that's in steam.
So whether you keep the existing building or put a new structure up, you're gonna have to get a special use permit.
I will say I wanna rent it. I just leave it the way it is, and I wanna rent it so somebody comes in there and fits the building, rather than me fit the building to them. Is that possible, to rent it for an office?
Rent it for a while.
Huh? Rent it for something that is...
You're limited on your options, like he said. You've got a one-family dwelling, a two-family dwelling, or what else? Gift shop or something along those lines.
It's, it's, it's only two little rooms, the whole thing. It's, it's, it's small. Two little rooms in the, where the left was. Incidentally, the left he looked at, said that was okay too. But I'm not gonna go out and spend no $30,000 on it. There's no reason to do it.
Exactly. That's what I was, that was my point in that meeting.
Well, I mean, if, if the contractor, if we could bring that in for 10 grand, why would I spend 30? I'm not gonna pay. An architect will redesign, and I'll pay whoever's gonna do the work to submit their plans to Bob.
You would never do it? Your, your own architect said that it would cost you between $45 and $50 a square foot, which is anywhere from $30, $33,000.
My God, it's only...
Doesn't mean it ever, but it is. You have to meet the codes, Timmy. How are you gonna heat the building?
There's a stove in there. Can I use that?
You can use a stove. It depends on the type of stove you need.
If I don't... I mean, what I don't understand here, I'm, I'm missing the point. If we put that building back and shut the door on it, and nobody can get in it, right? And I wanna walk away from it? I can't own a piece of property and walk away from it, you tell me.
You can't build that for as a bid, you'll leave a vacant building. You have that permitted use for, in order to get a permit. Once again, I don't write, I don't write the votes down.
I understand that. I understand that.
And the question is, I mean, certainly, if it was structurally sound, you probably could, but that's the issue. The issue is, and that the village is saying the village is not...
There's only, only two things to be done here that I can think of, do either fix it or dump it. That's the only two choices there is.
Exactly.
That's right.
No? My sister wants it to be fixed. Throw it in.
That's, that's perfectly up to you if you wanna dump that kind of money into it, you know? And that's, that's your personal business.
That's what we're getting at. It's, like you said, either dump it or fix it. Yes, she wants to fix it, but she doesn't wanna fix it at that cost. At the cost that it's gonna take to bring it up to code, bring it structurally sound. So I guess that's what we're getting at. What, what's it gonna be? Is it gonna be that you're gonna spend the money to fix it up the way it should be fixed up, or are you gonna tear it down?
I'm not, I don't know what my sister wants to do. I'm not gonna spend $30,000 on it. We gotta spend 10, yes, I, I'd go for that, but not 30, no.
Well, we've already gotten architects, we've gotten, everybody's been involved in this.
The place has got a decent terrain, except for one spot. So what, what are you gonna do?
Then why did your architect say it was gonna be $45 to $50?
I have no...
Let me not then go on a cable show.
If I, could I bring this back, Mr. Mayor?
Glad to. I'm sorry.
I'm a little disappointed tonight. I thought that the Malloy's and Mr. Bracy were going to come to us with a plan of attack on the foundation, and that's what we are here to discuss. We've been, I think we're beating the same bush a thousand times that we've beaten the last couple of public hearings that we've had on this property, in terms of why are we doing this, and what's our agenda? I think we've answered these questions time and time again. I'm looking for it. Where's the plan? There is no plan this evening.
I have no plan. How do I go make a plan?
But if I can just keep going just for a second, the agreement was, and I think, Mr. Bracy, if you could clarify that for me, you being the legal expert on their side, was that not the agreement that we made when I made the motion then for this meeting on July 19th, that you would have a plan in hand to give to us for that foundation? And that, there was no agreement whatsoever that that was going to come from our engineer, Doug Ferris.
Well, you're right, and that's 100% correct.
So if I can stop you there, Tim? So you failed to follow the order to comply the first time. We've given you an extension, we've given you another extension, and that has been failed to be complied with. And you tell me that, you're telling the board that the owners want this building fixed. I don't see it, quite frankly.
Well, I, I'm going back to this. You're the ones that are telling us that building's deficient, you want something done. I get a copy of your village engineer's report tonight saying what he wants done. It's certainly our responsibility to come up with a plan, but you can't tell me you're gonna give me the report tonight, and you want, you want our plan of attack tonight?
I, I go back, I mean, if, if that's, if that's what you would want, and, first of all, I think that the Malloy should've had somebody there on their side, their own engineer, now, excuse me, if they had their own engineer, and that digging was being done, I thought that was part of the agreement, that they'd have their representative there, our representative would be there. They'd come to an agreement. And I, I may be sounding naive and optimistic from the July 19th meeting, but I believe wholeheartedly that that was the compromise, that we'd have both engineerings, or Doug and an architect engineer from the Malloy side, and we'd come back this meeting, and there'd be something on the table for us. And if it was agreeable to all parties, we'd go along with it. And if something wasn't right, then we'd try to work out another compromise or go along with the demolition.
I guess what Ron's trying to say is that, yes, our, our engineer was there. He was doing a job for us. He should've been, you should've had, like he said, and they should've compared notes, and that's where we should be right now. We should say, "Okay, well, our engineer says this, this, and this needs to be done. Your engineer says this, this, and this needs to be done." We should be comparing these right now. We shouldn't be arguing that, that, "Well, your engineer says this, and, and we need to go with that." No, that's not the way it should've been right now.
Well, let me say this. When we, when this all started, I went out and got an architect, and went out and looked at that place, who said, "The building is not unsafe. They have no case." I said, "Fine."
But your architect also said that it was gonna cost $45 to $50 a square foot, which is $30,000, to fix that building. And they are not willing to spend that.
Well, well, we think we can do it for cheaper. That's bottom line. We think our architects overstated the cost.
I guess I...
I'm just saying this, that that's, from the beginning, that's been our position. I came into this place trying to work something out to save this village and to save my clients a lot of money going to court. I still fully believe in going to court and get this, get this action stopped, that the building is not unsafe. However, every time I come up here for these folks, every time Mr. Connors comes up here for these folks, every time a backhoe goes to that property, these folks spend money. And they weren't gonna spend money on having Mr. Connors there until the village said what was wrong. This isn't, this isn't a game, a give and take.
You think the village is spending money? You think Mr. Ferris is doing this for free?
I'm sure he's not.
Do you think Mr. Menain comes up here for, for free also?
I'm sure he doesn't.
The village is acquiring the same cost that the Malloy's are.
I understand that, but it's the village...
And it seems to me, I'm sorry to interrupt you, sir, but it seems to me if I was interested, it fits in that building, and you knew our engineers was up there, you know, it's all you have to do is make a phone call and ask for that piece of paper. Nothing is asked for. The meeting before, nothing was asked for.
Well, I, I don't wanna get in an argument here. Uh, you know...
Just frustrating, I'll tell you.
On July 19th, I truly had hoped that Mr. Menard was completely wrong, when four of us voted to give you the extension, and he was very adamant that things weren't going to happen, and I'm afraid that I've come to his side, I don't see things as happening.
I done what I could there, I got the man in, dug the place up, for your engineer my cost, I did what I could. Now I get this report Friday. I've talked to the man today, he wants to come back a week from tomorrow, and do some more digging there. That's Encon.
And that's, and that's not my client's fault, that's something that, that the village told Encon after they had left that day, "By the way, you got to come back, we got to dig again, what about this floor drain?" That's not something these people caused, that's another can of worms, the village is opening, saying, "Now you got to come back and take care of that." These people have been responsive to everything the village has said.
Well, I might take exception to that. If that had been the case, we would never have gone to the first order to comply. And I think as a, as a lawyer, you should understand that.
I'll say, since I've been involved in this case, I've had these people bend over backwards, because I've told them from the beginning, it's better to try to work this out than to go to court. I'm second guessing myself right now, these folks have paid me a lot of money, and it could turn out it's for nothing, because we might end up going to court anyway. I mean, it seems like the village is throwing up obstacles to these folks trying to do what they want, you know, they, they can't, they have to put a boutique in, a one-family dwelling. She wants to have a little office there. You know, Brandon, we might be able to get that going through the process again, but you're certainly not going to spend the money to, to put an office in, knowing that the village could or could not approve that process down the road. I mean, this is a...
Not the village, the code, the code.
Well, it's, I refer to the village collectively as, as the people who make the decisions. And, you know, unfortunately, it's not my client. And, and we're still trying to work it out, but to us, I feel like this has to be a step by step thing. Now I know what the village engineer says has to be done, and I haven't been looking at this as a give and take between the village engineer and our architect. I look at this as an engineer saying, "This is what I think needs to be done, I don't know, is this negotiable?"
There's, there's nothing in that report that I did not discuss with Mr. Malloy on site that day.
So he knew about it, he knew about it.
So I worked in and gave him...
I have no, I have no problem with him, I agreed to do what he said with the foundation. I agree with that, I have no...
Yes, please.
Bob? George, as far as Encon coming back, that's irrelevant to the fact of discussing the foundation. They can come back, they can do what they want, that won't have anything to do with the foundation part of it.
That's true.
But it has, it has no bearing on Encon coming back, what you're discussing tonight is the foundation and the building.
Why would I want to do anything when I've got Encon hanging over my head? Why would I want to spend a nickel on that? What if they find something there that is a contaminated site?
Timmy, I don't think we asked you to spend, what we asked was that you come back here tonight with a plan, saying, starting such and such a date, if everything's all right, we're going to do this, starting such and such a date, and I, exactly what I said at the last meeting, that I asked to have a plan of attack, what was going to happen here, and if we're right back to square one.
Well, I don't think we're back to square one, I think the plan is still going on, the plan is DEC is going to come back to the property next year.
It's supposed to be here tonight. I mean, April 15th, we compare our income tax, and we'll still be looking for a plan.
I don't think that's going to be the case, because I think the village will take action before that. These folks, I told you last time, they want to have something done by the end of this year. But, again, they're not the ones who summoned DEC back to this property, they're coming back next week.
Mr. Bracy, just for the record, I was the one who called the DEC after I found that floor drain. Since the DEC took the lead on the environmental aspect of the project, and since they had left site, and we found that floor drain late in the day, I thought that Mr. Long should know about it, to see how he wanted to act upon it. Mr. Malloy was positive that there was no floor drain from that building, and we found the floor drain. Now Mr. Malloy is positive there's no drywall on site.
I'm not positive of that, no.
Okay, so the DEC can check that.
I don't think it's there.
I'm not casting weight, I'm just saying...
No, that is setting the record straight, so everyone knows who made the phone call.
I'm just saying, this is, that's, we'll call it a wrinkle in the process, and DEC has to come back, and like Mr. Malloy says, he's maybe a little more conservative than his sister, if they come back and find something, he's not going to spend the money to, to do all this stuff, if, you know, they can find anything at any given time, that could cost a lot of money to take care of.
I'm not going to put any money in anything there until I get a clean bill of health from Encon, period. That's where I stand, if you guys want to change that, so be it.
You knew of the DEC letter that came on Friday?
Came on Friday, I talked to Mr. Long today. He said he'll be back, I think it's the 24th of October, 10:30 in the morning, have a backhoe there, you guys could be there, he would like to have you there, just so, you know, whatever gets dug up, you'll get to see it, this is all he does.
So by Friday, last Friday, there still was not any type of plan outlined or anything?
I had no plan, I told these people before, I ain't spending a nickel on that place until I got a clean bill of health from Encon.
You thought you had a clean bill of health from Encon?
Well, all except for what's behind the station. We don't know, I don't think there's nothing there, because when they, if there was, when they went through there with a sword, they probably took it out. That's probably why that was, had a block of cement on the end of it.
That was a thrust block.
I'd have to say, no, you can't say you've got a clean bill of health from Encon until you've got it in writing.
Was there a pipe going away from that, and that was a thrust block, there's no...
Yeah, that was a thrust block.
There wasn't enough water pressure to require a thrust block.
I know, that's what it was.
So what you're saying is that if you, if Encon doesn't give you a clean bill of health, you're not...
Well, I couldn't do anything anyhow, I don't have, I mean, then the property is condemned, right?
No, necessarily, what they lose is just having cleaned up that particular area, like, is that correct?
Yeah, it doesn't mean it's condemned, it means you got to clean up.
Once you start that cleanup, Bob, I seen that turn right into some real fun.
It shouldn't be that bad, if nothing else was cleaned up, I would think it'd only be a few backhoe shovels, and that'd be about it.
This, I don't know, you know, what he's looking for is a drywall that that went into, I don't think there's one there, but I don't know that there isn't.
But he's doing a drywall, they remove it, they remove that little bit of dirt, that's the end of it. Put in some sand or whatever, and you're done. You know as well as I do that.
Yeah, well, no matter what happened there, you got to throw it in the truck, take it to Certified Landfill, and get a receipt for it, right?
So, so they do it, so it costs...
Where's the Certified Landfill, Buffalo or someplace?
Or you can send it to Ford Edward, and it gets incinerated.
Ford Edward, whatever.
Any other discussion? No more discussion, I close this hearing. Does the board want to take action?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the building on the laundry property be removed.
No, second.
I got a motion made and seconded, is there any more discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Bobby, you go out for bids. I open the second session on the second public hearing to remove the building at 62 and 66 Rose Avenue, Matthew's property. If there's no discussion, board?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the code enforcement officer to get coast to remove the buildings on that property also.
No, second.
Heard the motion made, seconded, what...
I was going to say, before you close, I don't know if Mr. Bracy still represents Mr. Matthews or not, should I ask him to come back in, or ask him if he still represents Mr. Matthews?
I think he's already agreed that they were going to come down, last meeting.
Can I ask him, we'll talk, just to be sure.
There's also two locations there, too.
Yes.
Yeah, there's 62 and 66.
Just going to hand over the headers.
Uh, not the matter, that's all, if he hasn't been in contact with me, I think he's just a little bit, though.
Okay, you heard the motion made, seconded, any discussion?
If I may, I spoke, I just spoke to Mr. Bracy outside, he advises me that he has not spoke to Mr. Matthews today, or, it sounds like in the last couple of days. He, he advises me that he is not representing Mr. Matthews this evening.
Thank you. No other discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. I close the public hearing on Matthew property, open no comments to the public. Be no comments from the public minutes of the previous meeting.
I'm going to accept the minutes from meeting of August 2nd.
I'll second.
Heard the motion made, seconded, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's also the special meeting, August 4th?
Yes, amend it.
Bills, do you have a copy of the bills?
I make a motion that we accept the bills as amended.
Wait a minute, Mr. Drudge.
I have one bill to be added, it's to municipal services, it's for the, it's partial payment on the sewer relineing of 1999's prep work, cleaning, TV inspection, tap cutting, and mobilization for $25,000. We spoke to the chief sewer plant operator, and he's satisfied, and I'm preparing the mayor's talk for the gentleman today, too.
Who was talking about that?
Yeah.
No, it's just a partial payment?
Just partial payment.
Oh, just a partial, okay.
Just for what's been done to the property.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the bills as amended, I'll second.
You heard the motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have no correspondents.
Report of mayor and trustees, on my agenda tonight only, I request an executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
I'll second that.
I'll roll call, vote, trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Duprah.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Burke.
Aye.
Mayor will tie. That's it for me, trustee Moore.
Okay, I have the Public Works report, August 16th, just from Robert Clark, Public Works, writer. Public Works, Nelson, Clarence, and Jerry have been touching up the streets, getting ready for the paving, they'll be milling the edges of the roads within the next two weeks. Bob Sterling and the sidewalk crew will be finishing within the next two weeks. Electric department, the electric crew has been working at Washington Avenue, they are expected to start pulling cable on Smith Street and Washington Avenue within the next couple of weeks. I also have the, here the, let's see, discussion on the library system, we know that they want a veto system for the public library, and it says here, "We please check with Sam Club, price the same system, and have their station, Sam Club offices, the same system I have, and the package is different, the price higher, given I purchased the time." The monitor system, four cameras, $999.99. The ex, this veto of our reporter machine, $398.99, total, $1398.98. And decide to go along with this installation, and be included by our own employees, this was provided by Bob Craig, so, if you have any, decide what you want to do.
Is there money in the budget for this, Kelly?
Library board has agreed to, uh, take the machine, the copying machine? The library board has agreed to give up the copying machine and budget in order to put this in, now that they feel this is more cost effective than the copying.
Any discussion for the board?
Is that anything that we need more of, is that anything that we need more than one quote?
They can get another price, you know, it's a kind of, Bob has done some expensive research on this, and I don't think they can get any cheaper than this.
I guess I would assume that he has, and he can probably provide us with what it might cost us, but he probably already has that information, but he just provided us with what he thought was the best option.
Sure, putting in ourselves, if we can save on...
Yes. I make a motion, it will be accepted.
Seconded.
Purchased it. Purchased it. Got a motion made, seconded, is any discussion? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, now I have something listed on the agenda, but it's the apartment dated August 14th, 99, trustee Menard and Menard and myself, from Chief Craig, this police activity report for the second quarter, the second quarter of 1999, included with 234 complaints handled, and 197 traffic issues issued, 16 criminal arrests, to highlight a few of the situations handled, there were 20 motor vehicle complaints, 15 911 calls, 16 bad checks investigation initiated, five warrant arrests, 15 animal complaints, 15 denial complaints, six motor vehicle accidents investigation, 13 vehicle blockouts, and 24 miscellaneous complaints. Compared to the second quarter of 1998, the report reflects an approximately increase in criminal activity of 25%. Now I have, author, I want to authorize the mayor to sign the veto property agreement, I'd like to make a motion on that, that we, we allow to do that.
Seconded.
Heard the motion made, seconded, is any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And that's all I have, then.
Thank you, trustee Moore, trustee Duprah.
I have the semi-monthly water plant update, which contains the usual rotations as to the work that is being done there, and then I have a second update, which is of some greater importance, I believe the rest of the board also has a copy of this. Chief Water Plant Operator, Jared Malinsky wishes to bring to our attention the need for replacing the Adams control panel due to anticipated problems. He also wishes to bring to our attention that the industrial system number two has developed some serious problems, we should look into the possibility of replacement of the assembly. Apparently, there is money in the budget for a new pump, but a motor panel for the variable speed drive is also necessary. I would suggest that the board authorize Mr. Woodske to get some prices as to what is it going to cost, and so that we can determine if we can afford the replacement of our budget. I don't think there needs to be any discussion, although I would certainly welcome any discussion on whether we need to do this. I think it goes without saying that it's an integral part of our system that needs to be maintained, and at the present rate, it's not going to be. I don't know if Doug has any further information on this that you wanted to offer?
No, it's just that I think that things like this should be taken into account, we're talking about upgrading the plant, we could look at the, have a timeline for when we could get things online versus when these systems might be repaired, how long we could go without them, et cetera. But this is the kind of thing that's going to happen more and more, because we've got 30 years out of the equipment, and it's just a sign of things to come.
You're not going to add, you were just saying, what we're going to try to do, is we're going to look into a new pump, the whole column, first, and then we're going to find out if we can adapt the motor to the one we got, you know, to wing it, till we decide to do something.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're probably not looking at lots of money for a pump, or just a motor and a drive, because the old one's, the old one's like about $10,000 to rebuild, you know, like Doug says, it's 30 years old, you know, only one place in the United States, it's got to go back to them to rebuild it, and it's just, it's not worth it.
Do you know, do you have an idea?
I've got two people coming up this week who'll give us the prices on pumps, head motors, and drives.
So we might have a better idea of what we're looking at next meeting?
Yeah. By next meeting, you should have all your numbers together.
Now, that's just on the pump. What about the Adams control panel?
You know the controller, on the Adams filter?
Yeah.
That card reader?
Well-
That's not a, we, I mean, we're running by, I think we're running there by hand, aren't we?
Yeah, but I think when we looked into that, at that one time, it wasn't feasible to fix it, about 10,000 dollars to put that card back online. They've been running it by hand.
How about something else?
Huh?
That is a variable speed motor, right?
Yeah.
Why couldn't we look at a programmable controller in there? You know, have an engineer come in and take a look at that, put a programmable controller, which would be considerably cheaper than repairing that thing.
George, all that does, it controls the back washes. They do them by hand anyways, there's no sense spending money on that at this stage of the game. It has nothing to do with the motor, bringing the speed up on the motor or any of that, or starting it. It's all gonna be done by hand. We had looked in that before, you can't buy the cards for it, it's too old.
Yeah, I understand that. Long said, it's, you know, a programmable controller for four or $500, you fix that product.
I don't, you could look into it, I think before we looked, it was a lot more than that, George, because you gotta pick up all the air system. You know what I'm saying? Yeah, the guy came in before when you were there, Timmy. You really gotta get in the back of that panel and see how this thing is made, because they're all air valves that run all that stuff in there, George. And the programmable, you'd have to add so much equipment with the programmable thing. You could make it work, but you're talking a lot of bucks.
And it's, again, what I was thinking is basically, your plant is run manually, okay? And so if we're talking about programmable controllers, et cetera, I think it's gonna be more complicated, like Bobby was suggesting.
Yeah, if you gotta convert it from electronic to air, it's-
We need to look at automation and the total upgrade, maybe a phased plan or something to do that, so that whatever we're going to put in is gonna be part of the eventual system. So it just emphasizes again how we need to move on and upgrade, and this water committee should really, we should agree on a timeline, because by the time we say, "Yeah, let's do it," we're gonna go to preliminary engineering design bidding, we won't have construction out there for two years, probably.
I guess my feeling is, I appreciate being advised of these situations, and sitting here with the rest of the board, we can say, "Yes, that's something that needs to be done." But unless we have a plan, and know how much it's going to cost and what, you know, time it's going to take, we really can't make a decision whether we wanna go forward on one thing or not. So certainly, I think, Bobby, you've indicated that you have a pretty good plan on the pump and motor, what it would cost to bring it back online. And you're kind of indicating that you don't think that the Adams panel is anything that we can do at this time?
You know, I looked at it, that, George might know, somebody out there that's got, you know, two air sources, he'll be playing with more of this stuff than I ever have. You know, there's, maybe there is something out there, I don't know. George-
I guess the information that we wanted to send back to Mr. Malinsky is that we are aware of the problems that he has presented to us, and now we're looking for some type of plan of action that we can either initiate or go forward with.
Some of it we don't want, because George's got, I don't-
You'd have to get a, you know, no disrespect, but a control engineer to look at. And he might be right, Bobby might be absolutely right, might be, you know.
The next item is the work plan. I would request that the author, the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement with Doug Ferris for the work plan regarding the water storage tank study. I move that to the board.
Second. The other motion is made and seconded, any discussion?
Will this, Doug, also include any possible combined study with Thomas Champlain?
We can incorporate it in there. We talked about it last time, if we've got some ideas of a joint approach and prospect street, we can look at that as one of the options and advise him on it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. I'll talk to Mr. Ferris after the board meeting.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, trustee Dubra. Trustee Menard.
My only item on the agenda is I would like to appoint Bob Bart as the village office point representative to inspect the Andrew Davis property on Rose Avenue.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have, first.
Thank you, trustee Menard. Well, trustee Burke?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, trustee Burke, I appreciate that. Other reports, Beth, can you have anything for us tonight? Madam Clerk?
The only thing I want to do is I would like to thank the people who are taking care of the flower beds in our park. I have never seen them more beautiful, I think our park looks very nice.
Not only the park, down here, too?
Yes, and it's the same people. And they do great jobs.
Certainly deserve this whole thanks.
That's all I have.
Harrison?
I don't have any people.
Bob?
Duncan.
Bob? Tim? Why don't you rule over, I put on Bob, Bob, and Bob. Open the meeting, after comments from the public? I'm sorry, Doug, I did it again.
Sorry, I, one thing, some time ago, the board requested me to prepare a work plan and proposal for the Champlain Street sidewalk project, we've talked about that. I've got the plan, I'll give it to the village administrator, and if we could look at this and talk about it next meeting, that would be great.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Open the meeting to the comments in public. There's no meeting, no, there's no comments from the public, I recessed the meeting.